All right, welcome everybody. We're gonna go ahead and start today's meeting, September 17th, 2019. May I have a real call please ma'am?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardosa.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, if you everyone please rise. We're gonna have invocation this evening by Pastor Michael Seo- Seola from Calgary Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if she would mind, led by Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you Mayor for the privilege. Let's ask God's help tonight in our business. Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered together to do business for our community. We thank you for the grace you've bestowed on our great nation, our state and our local community. Thank you for the reminder that we are your servants and serve the needs of the people. Thank you for these who serve Yuba City as our elected city council members. As they begin their deliberations tonight, may it please you to grant these our requests. O people, the Lord has told you what is good, and this is what he requires of you, to do what is right, to love mercy and to walk humbly with your God. I pray for our city council this evening and the execution of their duties, that they will act fairly, humanely, that you grant each the gift of wisdom, not from cultural trends, but from above. We pause and remember those who were uniform of our local police, California Highway Patrol, deputies and Sheriff's Department, and the great work that they do to protect us and serve us, because ultimately your word says, they're your servants. Protect them and bless them and their families. For our local fire departments and all the great work that they do, serving us, helping us, rescuing us, taking good care of us. Likewise, give your angels charge over them and keep them in all their ways. So in all the decisions rendered here tonight, may they always be those which make the lives of our people easier, less burdensome, and always in the best interests of the people for the future development, expansion, for new business in Yuba City, California. I thank you and pray these requests in the strong name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Pastor. Moving on to number three, ordinance with Dennis Cook. Am I, I am forgetting number one. Boy, am I in a hurry or what? Welcome Keith.
Dennis wants to go home anyway, right?
Thank you. Damn, where that came from?
The groups, there we go. Thank you. Just you asked if I could provide a little update on the transit authority for you tonight, and I just wanted to know that a number of you are new to the council, and so for others, you've, you're familiar with, with this before, but give you a little update here tonight. Yuba City Transit is a joint powers agency. It was formed in 1975 by the two counties and the cities of Marysville and Yuba City. The agency is governed by eight member board directors, two from each jurisdiction for, from your council. Councilmembers Shaw and Cardosa are representatives from Yuba City, and so they, they've done an excellent job in that role. Thank you. Our services have always been operated and maintained by a private contractor. That contract is, is awarded on a periodic competitive procurement basis. We're currently at the end of a, of a current contract, and we'll be changing, actually changing contractors at the, at the beginning of next month. As a result of the private contract relationship, we don't, we have just five employees that are responsible for the planning, the finance, administration of the agency, and then we also, in, with that separate agreement, we're also responsible for the regional waste management authority as well. Our maintenance and operations facility is located at, in Marysville, 2100 B Street. That facility was formerly a setup bottling plant, for those of the old timers in the community, and we remodeled it in 2000, actually 96, and then again in 2011 to its current configuration. Our budget for this year is about $8.3 million. We have a variety of funding sources, but about 34% comes from local sales tax revenues, 30% from federal, urban and, and rural public transit funds, and 17% from state transit assistance funding, and another 4% from miscellaneous sources. Our $5.6 million capital budget is funded exclusively from federal and state sources. Includes a, it's current, the current budget includes a major fleet replacement project that will complete about an 18-month cycle of, of replacing 28 of our 51 buses. So we've been in a rather significant replacement cycle. We, in our future, the cattle budget will be much smaller than that for the next few years. What began as a subsidized taxi program in, in 1975 for seniors and persons with disabilities now offers a wide range of services. We, last year provided over 92,000 service hours, and that, that number has not changed much in recent years. We offer six local fixed routes to operate weekdays and Saturdays from 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 at night. We have a, the services operate every 30 or 60-minute frequencies on those six routes each day. Our local data ride service operates, offers curbside service to seniors and persons with disabilities, and that service operates on weekdays from 6:30 to 6:30. But after 6 o'clock to 9:30 at night, we offer that service for the general public as well. So it's an evening data ride service for, for those who need that service. We have Sacramento commuter and midday service, offers 23 schedules a day to downtown Sacramento. We've offered that service since 1990, and so obviously grown over time, and we offer three rural routes as well. It serves the Live Oak, Wheatland, and the Yuba County foothills. Our 15 buses range from 16 passengers to 57 passengers, buses, and all of our buses are wheelchair lift equipped for two wheelchair positions, and they all have bike racks as well. We were the first transit system in the region to have 100% bike rack accessible service, and we have a lot of bike boardings in our system over, over time. Recent improvements that we've made in the last, you know, 10 years or so, we haven't had a lot of, of service growth because of the uncertain financial conditions and, and available capacity in our system, but we have done a number of things to help modernize the system and, and kind of recover from the growth that we've, we've seen prior to that. Those include the conversion of our local fixed route system buses to all low-floor, modern-designed buses. Our commuter buses are now all high-floor tour-style buses as well. We've added commuter parking ride lots at, at, in Alphast and in Plumas Lake, and then we've also expanded the parking ride lot that's up in Bog Road, just south of Yuba City. Added video surveillance systems to all of our buses for improved security for, for everyone involved, expanded our, and remodeled our current facility in Marysville to its ultimate capacity. We've also expanded our air district funded program for discount monthly bus passes to include not only the youth, but also seniors and disabled passengers as well. And then we've also recently rolled out a electronic fare card system that called the Connect Card that is now fully functional, that was part of a regional program that we were a partner to, that was initiated by Secog and is operated by regional transit in Sacramento. Our, on the ridership side, we've, we've, through 2015, we had 12 straight years of historic ridership highs. In fact, through that time period, we had 24 or 25 years we had ridership growth. Since 2015 though, our ridership has dropped, and we now, we, at our peak was about 1.3 million passenger trips. We're now a little over 900,000 passenger trips in our system through the last fiscal year. The similar ridership reductions and, and probably worse in many of our, our sister operations around the state and certainly around the country have, a lot of reasons have been looked at for what, what's causing that. Local factors certainly contributed to our, some of our own policy choices and service choices we've made related to service alignments and the, our fare structure and transfers and that sort of thing. Also, we've had the kind of chronic problem with on-time reliability. Anybody who drives through the region knows traffic's a lot worse today than it was five years ago. So our schedules that were set up in that time period, you know, no longer terribly realistic at some times, especially since the, the, the campfire trucks have gone through Marysville for the last year plus. So we're looking forward to that being over as well. And then also we had some, a little population growth in the area, and some of our vehicles that we're now replacing are quite unreliable as well. The good news is our Sacramento ridership has been trending upwards over the last 18 months, actually since about January of 18, and we're seeing some good numbers there. And then we have some other initiatives that we hope will help stabilize the system as well, including the, the, I've already mentioned the tour-style coaches on our commuter buses, as well as the free Wi-Fi service on our commuter and fixed route buses. And then we've also done some major improvements and expansion of our bus stop amenities, bus stop benches and shelters that are out there. And then we've also added a bus tracker app that is available for our public as well to, to know when the next bus will be coming. There are a couple significant issues I want to touch on before I, I close, is that, one of them is that the California Air Resources Board recently, it's December actually, 18, adopted the, the Innovative Clean Transit Regulation that will ultimately require that all the buses we purchase by 2029 will be zero emission buses. That will have a dramatic impact on us, not only financially for the cost of those buses and also for the fueling infrastructure, but also our facility isn't capable of, of bringing that kind of power and other services into that property in order to have the space to, to deal with that. So we competed for and we were awarded a competitive grant from Caltrans for a project we call on the Next Generation Transit Facility Site Study that we hope to be releasing the RFP for that this week, actually, within the week. And that will help us to identify potential sites within the region and evaluate those and ultimately select preferred sites, which will drive the process to secure funding, ultimately to design and build a new facility in the next 10 years to support the next generation of transit in our region. The other issue we're dealing with is, is our, our system was, as we said before, was designed a number of years ago for a different operation and a different economy, and so we are, we are looking to do a comprehensive operational analysis on our system, and we're hoping as well to seek Caltrans funding to support a, a comprehensive operational analysis for us in the next year or so. As we, as you can tell from our operation over the years, and, and people reminded me here tonight how long I've been here, but the, the, we have changed a lot over the last 30 years, and while it's still a small system, we do provide a lot of different kinds of services for a lot of different people. And back in 1990, we had 132,000 boardings, so it's, it's changed a lot over that time period, as our community has as well. So we still want to balance the, the local priorities with the local funding sources and, and the mix of the passenger demand and a policy direction from our councils and boards as well. So with that, I would open up to any questions you might have. I think we've provided you with some materials of, from our, our current service materials, as well as our most recent passenger newsletter.
I think we're good to go.
See the mayor? Thank you Keith for the presentation. I'm sorry. Well, I was waiting. Anyway, hey Biden chants, Keith, could you please enlighten the folks here in council about our future with, with our buses, about the zero admissions, and just give, let them, the folks know that what a bus costs now and what it's gonna cost in the future, and it has to be done, what, within the next 10 years?
Right, the, the new policy does take effect in the next couple of years for larger systems. For us, our first mandate would be 2026. At 25% of any buses purchased at that time period, we had to be zero emission. That means we had to start being able to, to manage them in our current site. So typically, that's either battery electric buses or hydrogen fuel cell buses. A battery electric bus costs in the neighborhood of $850,000 to $900,000. Our current buses that we're, we're having delivered next month will be about $425,000, $450,000. So to give you an idea what a diesel bus is like compared to those types of buses. Hydrogen fuel cell buses are like 1.2 million for the same size capacity, and that would make me choke as well, it has regularly. So those are, and then the infrastructure to support those, to bring the power to the property, to charge the vehicles, and that's some of the issues we're looking at, sustainability. If we, there's not enough power in Marysville right now to, to power the, a fleet of 51 buses if we were to, to charge them up at the same time. So we don't want to cause brownouts anywhere, so that's the kind of issues we'll be looking at is accessibility, infrastructure. These are huge issues, and for us, it, as a small system, it's a major issue.
Thank you Keith. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number two, public safety presentation. Mr. Fuller, thank you.
Good evening Mayor Harris, members of the council. Chief Williams and I are here to do a PowerPoint presentation for you about an overview of the fire department. Before we get started, I want to introduce Zachary Hamel, and Zachary is the new emergency services manager for Sutter County. Zach came from Sonoma County Office of Emergency Services. Our office, the fire department, will be working closely with Zach and Brenna Howell, who's still on as a consultant, in the creation of a county-wide emergency plan, development of flood maps, joint emergency training opportunities that we've been working on, and the implementation of Code Red notification system. So I'd like to introduce Zach to you.
Good evening Mayor and council members. Like Chief Fuller said, my name is Zach Hamel, and I come from Sonoma County. While I'm new to Sutter County, I'm not new to the area, because I grew up in Colusa County. And once a month, we came to the big city of Yuba City to go grocery shopping, so familiar with the area. And much like Sutter County is similar to Sonoma County, we had a lot of flood issues there as well. So I'm very experienced with floods. The other thing that, from Sonoma County that I'm, I'm bringing with me, that I'm excited to bring to Sutter County and to Yuba City, is I created the Alert and Warning Program for Sonoma County. I ran the lar, the most unique and the largest alert and warning exercise on the west coast last year, where it provided a, a feedback for the public to, to give us information on how to, how, how, how well the message was received and how we can better draft these systems to, to implement them. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I look forward to working with all of you and the city staff.
We, again, we have a PowerPoint presentation for you to provide current update as to what's going on in the Yuba City Fire Department. So I'd like to, right here, thank you so much, I'd like to begin at the beginning. Oops. Little history lesson on Yuba City. In 1907, there was a fire that burned down the commercial center, basically Second and Bridge Street, and it started to move for the, the citizens of this area to incorporate as a city. In, in 1908, they incorporated as a city, and one of the first things they did in 1909 was to form a fire department. Picture there was the fire station which was under the water tower on Plumas Street. Our service area, we serve an area of approximately 30 square miles and includes a residential population of about 76,000. Now, our service area extends beyond the city's boundaries. We have a, work with a contract that the city has with the county of Sutter to provide services into what's called Community Service Area G, which was kind of covered the old Walton Fire Protection District. We have five fire stations that are strategically located within the urban area, and location-wise, you can see on the map here, Station One, kind of in the central part of the city, Station Two, thank you so much. Station One in the central part of the city, which is our busiest station. Station Two, which pretty, second busiest in the evening especially. Station Three to the south. Station Four, which is actually in the county, but it was put there during the time of Chief Boom Garden, to serve this larger area as the, as development filled out into the urban area. And Station Seven out on Butte House Road. Station Four and Seven, old Station Four on Walton Avenue, and Station Seven were the part of the Walton Fire Protection District. Too much. Let me go back here. Our interim organization chart, obviously we, we're in the process of going out to get a new fire chief. Currently, we have Chief Landon, the police chief, is serving as the public safety chief, both police and fire. Chief Williams is the assistant fire chief in, in, on charge of operations. I've been assigned to be the assistant fire chief in, in charge of administration. We have three battalion chiefs in charge of their shifts, shift A, shift B, and we have a fire marshal, considered our midman, our first level managers. Each station has a captain on each shift, engineer and firefighters, and we'll get into some of the staffing areas. We also have an administrative analyst and an administrative clerk and a fire safety inspector. I turn it over to Chief Williams.
So as far as the fire operations, when it comes to that side of the fire department, to put it in more simple terms, the operations side is everything that we see the folks of the Yuba City Fire Department performing on a day-to-day basis. With that said, as Bill Fuller had mentioned, the breakdown of our personnel at our stations. On a day-to-day basis, we have up to 16 firefighters that are on duty. For the station one, you might notice that there is an overstaffed position that is encompassed with the SAFER Grant firefighter that we have, but for the rest of our stations, we have a fire captain, engineer, and firefighter, and we'll discuss a little more later in the slide of how our SAFER firefighters are used, how that overstaffed position is used as well. As far as the growth of the fire department and how busy it has become in the last few years, as you can see the breakdown here, we are on pace once again for this upcoming year to be at or sightly above that call volume, and as you can see, we have increased regularly over the course of the past few years. This breaks down the service call comparisons with other fire departments. You'll note in the highlighted area there, Yuba City, we serve a population of roughly 76,000 people, but if you look at our call volume compared to some of the other cities that are mentioned there, our call volume is quite high in comparison. And as we look at what the cost of our calls or the incidents that we run roughly break down to, if you take our annual budget divided by the number of calls, we get roughly a little over $1,000 per a call. And one thing we might highlight, in comparison to some of our other cities, the cost per call is drastically less, and that ultimately reflects in the overall budget that the department has. Calls, cost per capita, as you can see, it breaks down to about $139, but as we go, progress on, the operations side encompasses everything that we mentioned as far as our line personnel, the engine companies, and of course, the various teams that the Yuba City Fire Department participates in. One of those being the Yuba Sutter Hazmat Response Team. This has been an apparatus that we have acquired through the state of California, which is contracted. If it is requested by the state, we send it with personnel to mitigate whatever hazardous material situation that might be taking place in our area and region of the state. Also, we work closely with our police department. We have TIM's team members, our tactical EMS, and that is starting to grow a little more broad as we work with other entities in our neighboring county. And as we continue, we have our ATR team, which we call or refer to as the Advanced Technical Rescue Team, and this is a specialized team who is involved in various types of rescue, such as water rescue, confined space type rescues, trench rescues, and everything else that falls under that umbrella, if you will. We talked about our obligation to OES or the Office of Emergency Services. We actually have a number of apparatus with that entity. All of them are under contract, again, for us to send out if they're requested. Our OES 293, which is pictured here, was taken out of service by the state. It was replaced with OES 407, which we had out on display earlier this evening, and then we have, of course, our hazmat rig, and then our special ATR trailer through OES. One of the big pieces for the Yuba City Fire Department is that we are involved with the community on a regular basis. Sometimes during the busy season, that could be a day-to-day arrangement. As you can see, we go out to visit schools, and if there's an opportunity within the community, certain events, we take that opportunity to have a part in, in the various events that do occur. Some of the issues that we've been posed with, as we mentioned, we do have the SAFER Grant staffing, and that has allowed us to increase our staffing, which has served us well and the community well. But there have been some challenges associated with that as well. On this current SAFER Grant, which is a three-year term, we have nine firefighters that are on that grant. One of the challenges is keeping nine firefighters on that grant because of the nature of the SAFER Grant employment, which is temporary, limited, and with the pay, it, it becomes a challenge to keep the personnel that we have invested in and trained. But with that, if things are good, we could have staffing up to 16. As we mentioned, it's been a challenge to keep that level of staffing with the SAFER Grant. By the end of August 2021, we will be looking at a possible scenario of decreasing our staffing from 16 down to 13 once the term of the SAFER Grant expires. Obviously, the goal is to work towards something that might help us to keep those firefighters. With that said, over the last three years, this statistic here, 51% of our staff has been, we've been able to get that staffing all through the SAFER Grant. That poses a little bit of a challenge in itself, in the fact that our department is becoming increasingly younger, and with attrition and retirements, there's been a necessity for players within the fire department to step into, to new roles. Because of that, we've had to promote individuals, which has been a good, good positive thing for our department moving forward. But with that said, we've been having to promote individuals who may not have had as much experience as some of our past members of our department. One example, we've had an FAO promotion of an individual who was promoted after two years of being hired as a firefighter. So the goal is to work to, to fill these key positions. However, with, again, with the nature of that SAFER Grant, we experience many of our firefighters coming, being trained, because the Yuba City Fire Department does train a good firefighter, but because of that, it makes them more marketable, and as they seek permanent employment, often they tend to go elsewhere as a result. At this point, I think I'll turn it back over to Bill Fuller for Fire Admin.
Wanted just to talk a little bit about fire administration. Fire administration obviously provides the department administrative functions, personnel, discipline, budget. We also provide Fire Prevention Bureau inspections, disaster preparedness, training, emergency management, emergency coordination, and grants. Fire Prevention Bureau is staffed by two people, the fire marshal and one fire safety inspector. Staffing has not changed in 20 years, though the number of inspections in the area of responsibilities have increased over that same time period. Back 10 years from now, or in the past, we were the fourth fastest growing city in California. So you know the growth that's occurred in this area. They're responsible for, obviously, inspections, plan checks on new construction, fire prevention, outreach and education, arson investigation, new construction, mandated inspections by the state assembly schools, Senate Bill 1205 inspections, which we'll talk about, weed abatement, fireworks booths and special permits. One of the things I think is important to, to put out there is that, once a building is constructed, it becomes a responsibility of the fire department and the Prevention Bureau to inspect in perpetuity, to assure that safety standards are maintained. So... So it comes out of the building department, it becomes ours forever. Our Prevention Bureau has worked with local school districts, Yuba City Unified, and the business community to maintain fire prevention and life safety standards. We put a three-year commitment to work with Yuba City Unified, went through every one of their facilities, brought up what was needed, and then helped their staff to provide the policies and procedures and kind of culture to improve their safety standards at the different schools. This is a kind of an interesting one, and it kind of corresponds to what Ali was talking about with the Safer Grant. As you see, we've had total inspections, 2005, they went up in 2010, they went up more in 2015, and they dropped. And you can see kind of here, the company inspections in 2015 went from that down to three hundred and three. What we're finding is the state training requirements to keep our safer people brought in, brought up to a standard, is pulling the time commitments of our full-time people away from company inspections to meet the needs of those staff. Same time that dropped, our Prevention Bureau picked up considerably more. One of the things down the road, we're doing some benchmarking right now, fire prevention bureaus, to see where we stand in comparison to them, that we may need additional staffing down the road. One of the big things that we'll be coming back to you this upcoming year, kind of dealing with mandatory inspections. As you probably remember, in Oakland, there was a fire called the Ghost Ship, a warehouse building where a lot of people were living and having an art colony in. Because the deaths that occurred at that facility, the fact that they were not inspected on a regular basis, the state legislature passed a bill that basically said that, well, you're already required to do these kinds of inspections of apartment houses, lodging houses, motels, hotels, schools. We need you then to come back to the elected body and present our, what we've done in a year, and that for the elected bodies to then pass a resolution, basically saying you've acknowledged receipt of that information. So we'll probably be coming back to you in June or July of next year with a report as to what we've accomplished in terms of these mandated inspections. Emergency management, the fire department has, for years, been the focal point for cities' emergency preparedness and training. One of the things we do is emergency management coordination with Sutter County on development of county-wide emergency plan, which we'll be working with ZAC on, emergency preparedness. We provide, coordinate the training of ICS training with all our new employees that come through. The elected officials from both city and county have gone through the executive training that's been done. Employee disaster training, as I just said, we're going to be, we've been doing some joint training with Sutter County on different aspects of emergency management. We also, emergency management coordination with county, state, and federal government, and we will be working on code red implementation with the county. Grants. For the fire department, we've been, as our budgets have been reduced over the last seven years like everybody else, we've been really focusing on grants. Since 2001, we've been able to secure six and a half million dollars that's helped us to provide two safer grants. We bought a number of equipment that we would have been tapping into the general fund and looking at staffing issues. These are the grants that we tend to go after. Some of them, like the flood mitigation and hazard mitigation paid for the county, or the city and county's local hazard mitigation plan, the water resources flood threat emergency response grant, we upgraded Station Four to be the city's EOC. And we'll continue to go after that. We'll be coming back to you. We just got a grant to replace all of our mobile and base station radios for about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Issues on equipment replacement, I've kind of talked a little bit about it. We've got a lot of these things, we're going to try to find grants or find alternate funding to save the general fund. But there's a couple things that are coming down the road. We're probably be coming back to you next fiscal year to purchase a second set of turnouts, the protective equipment that the firefighters wear. And there's a lot of issues that a lot of departments and national standards to look for, having two sets, you're going to roll after ten years, you get rid of one set. But we try to get it so there's a reserve and a primary set, so that if there's cleaning, they're changing the standards for cleaning. And right now, FEMA will not fund a second set of turnout, so we have to rely on the general fund. We have two engines that are in need of consideration. One is Engine One, it's a Type One engine, the pumper. Generally, what we've been doing, the practice has been fifteen years as a frontline engine, fifteen years in a reserve status. Engine One is seventeen years old right now. I think we're looking about seven hundred thousand on that. Because of the age of our fleet is too new, FEMA will not consider that. And the aerial truck, same thing with the thirty-year usable life, right now, we're at twenty-seven years. And those are things we'll come back to you budget-wise. Issues in facilities, Station Two is really our top project. We've been working on this in phases. The bids were going to be open tomorrow. I understand they delayed it a week to give the contractors a little bit more time. You've been through the station, we have structural issues, dry rot throughout the building, ADA accessibility issues. It was built in nineteen seventy-eight to house two people. It really wasn't built to be a fire station for the most part. Our other one, we'll be coming back to you with just some consideration, is looking to replace Station One. It's fifty-eight years old, has structural electrical, roof issues, heating and air, plumbing, ADA, you name it. We've talked about a better site utilization for the whole property, removing the water tower, which would open things up, construction, new communications monopole to serve both the city and the cell antennas from private companies. We have really impending failure of our asphalt in the back of Station One. We have a preliminary site plan, I just provided a copy to city manager Rock and Diana Langley to begin looking at. It's probably because of budget costs way off in the future. And that's our presentation. If you have any questions for Chief Williams or I, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Can't let you guys go without a comment. Excuse my voice. First, I want to acknowledge both of you for stepping up in this time of transition in the fire department. It's not easy. I've been there, and I know that, I know that you guys are doing a good job in just talking with the troops that you're leading. Things are going in a good direction, so I commend you for that. The final thing I would leave you with is, I'm happy to see Zach here tonight. Disaster preparedness, emergency preparedness is near and dear to my heart. I know it's, I don't want to speak on behalf of the council, but I know at some of our goal-setting meetings, it's been towards the top of the list, as well as making sure that our citizens and our emergency first responders, as well as the whole city staff, are prepared should we have to face something. So I'm encouraged to see you here. Thank you for coming to our county, and we look forward to working with you, and keep up the good work, you too. Thanks.
All right. Thank you both very much. All right, Dennis, your turn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Dennis Cook. I'm a planning consultant to the city. I work with your staff quite often. Brian Malara, your acting director, would be here tonight, but he was unable to come, so he asked me to fill in for him. The project before us tonight is a general plan amendment and a rezone. There was also originally a subdivision map, but the planning commission approved that contingent upon council action tonight of approving the general plan and rezoning. If you choose not to approve the project, subdivision, of course, dies also. The site, it's a five-point-seven-three-acre site located on the north side of Bridge Street, almost midway between Tharp Road and Walton Avenue, just to the east there. Went the wrong button. Just to the, get used to this, it's touchy. Just to the east is the Golden Pacific Bank. Hilbert's new construction company and yard is in the back of the property and the residential properties along the west side. Along the right side of the screen here is the property that we're talking about. This is a wide angle or a panel of the Bridge Street, and you see the single-family residential uses across the street, kind of ranch-style houses. And then along the west side of the property, you see the fences at the houses, some newer houses back out to the property, and then you can see the extension, the sidewalks along Bridge Street with the wall and landscaping. And then along the west side, and then the rear of the property, is some light industrial, heavy commercial-type property where Hilbert's has a lot of their equipment stored, and then the houses along the west side. Bridge Street, just the curb and gutter, is it on Bridge Street? It's pretty efficient, and then the sidewalks will be added, and you can see the bank building right next to the property. The existing general plan, the, it's property split. The north half of the property is business, technology, light industry, kind of matches the property just to the north. And then the south half of the property is office and office park property. For the amendment to the general plan, it will change most of the property. This will be a low-density residential, which is a single-family home, so map back up to these houses. The middle part will be a medium-density residential, which are typically duplexes, mobile home park, things like that. In this particular case, it'd probably be duplexes. And then there's a one-point-two-seven-acre piece, I believe, that's for multifamily development apartments. And then this corner, point-six acre, will stay as office, commercial as it is right And then the zoning matches that. The top half of the property will be commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial designation, and then the office on the south end will change over to mostly residential with the remaining office piece. This is the subdivision map. Something didn't come out too good on this slide. It's a bit, I don't know what happened, but I'll show it the best I can. The subdivision, this is Bridge Street right here, and the subdivision is this, it's upside down. Huh. Didn't show up that way on my screen. Anyway, the, you know, this is Bridge Street right here. Boy, that's a mess. Along the west side will be single-family residential. The interior part would be duplexes. The northeast part would be apartments and the remaining office commercial piece. Again, that's not before you tonight, but we just want to give you a sample of what it will be. When we looked at the project, there were no significant impacts found. The changing the general plan to, from like heavy commercial, light industrial, to mostly residential, really doesn't significantly increase the traffic that would be generated if the project was, if the property's built out either way. The only real kind of issue is incompatibility. You've got light industrial uses in back of what will be people's backyards. City ordinance, though, compensates for that somewhat, and they're required to put in a six-foot masonry wall and a hedge in to help with the visual characteristics that could be a problem. So the planning commission, they heard this, they had a public hearing, and they concluded, they recommended the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation measures that was prepared for the project, approve the general plan amendment, and to approve the rezoning that goes with it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Through the mayor. I've looked through the entire plan, so it was quite interesting. I like, I like the design, I like the whole idea. It sounds like a very productive opportunity for us. And I, I live on the other side of that area, so I'm extremely familiar with that little area. I tend to walk it when I can. And one of the questions that I have is on the traffic. What year was the traffic generation report that was utilized? Because I, in the report, in the planning commission report, it sounded like it was 2004, and since then, there's been a tremendous amount of growth since 2004, if I'm incorrect on that year.
The 2004 is referenced to when the general plan was adopted and the traffic study that was done for that. The traffic information in the staff report, that little study was done for this project recently.
It wasn't clear on the report to me. Can you let me know what year that was done?
It was just done six months ago.
Six months ago?
Mm-hmm. Maybe four months ago, pretty recent.
And so, because I've seen the traffic backup from River Valley High School all the way around to on the other side, so in looking at the report, it doesn't seem like there's a concern with the additional traffic, so that's where I was, it wasn't clear to me.
The...
Because I've seen the traffic, so...
Yeah, what we analyzed was, if that property was developed under the existing general plan, mostly commercial-type stuff, versus developing it as residential, the amount of traffic generated would not be significantly different. Doesn't mean there won't be more traffic, just the change isn't too much.
Right, there's peaks and valleys to that timeframe.
Yes, the peak hours are, of course, the worst hours.
Okay, so the peaks, the peak hours are within that morning and then late afternoon and mid-afternoon.
The peak AM is usually seven to eight, and the PM is just five to six, weekdays.
Okay, so then it's, the road is pretty rough, Bridge Street, that's the one that I'm talking about. So both sides, the entire road's going to be completely worked on, or...
I don't believe so. Ben, do you want to ask Ben to come up, our public work person, he can answer that in more detail.
So what you have before you tonight is regarding the general plan amendment and the rezone to the property, and the tentative map was taken at the planning commission in late July, I believe. And so with that tentative map, there's conditions for the improvement plans to be submitted, and then we'll work through some of these particulars regarding the exact improvements and where those cuts and where the landlines and how the traffic marking will be adjusted on Bridge Street. But developer, typically in Yuba City, the way we're set up is the developer is responsible to improve the property along their frontage. And with Bridge Street being one of your impact fee roads, we collect fees through the impact fees when you develop. Every time property owner pays impact fee for their house, we'll collect a portion of that fee for, for some of those improvements on Bridge Street later on. But, so no, there won't be required to widen the south side, if that clarifies.
The Tharp Bridge, Walton, that area right there, just that stretch, it seems the road is just really in poor condition, tons of traffic, concern when those peaks are high, and there is no sidewalk on the residential ranchette-style homes that you're speaking of. So what is the commitment by the city to take care of that? And as I looked in the planning commission notes, it described the widening of Bridge Street, and then it talked about that the developer's responsible for all improvements and public improvements on the road. So I just would like more clarity about that.
So the property owner's responsible to improve their frontage.
So that's half of the street?
That's half of the street.
I just want that in clear language for me.
Correct. And so, should the city decide to prioritize the widening of the south half or further to the west, then the city would need to utilize our impact fee dollars and leverage that with the property owner's development.
So council, if you have...
So right now, with the maintenance of that, it is definitely duly noted. I drove through there just this weekend, and there's a lot of potholes. It's time to get out there and do some maintenance as we move around, but that would not be a part of this developer's responsibility to maintain that.
Okay, so, but it would be a responsibility of the city, I would think. Okay, so, but it would be a responsibility of the city, I would think, because of all that...
Correct.
Traffic, and there's the turning, and then part of that would be the impact in the construction period also with additional traffic. I, I'm just hyper-aware because I live in the area.
So with the general plan 2004, it did a study of the traffic at build-out with that, with that site being built. And so the difference between that traffic that would have generated with, with the, the current zoning, which is the commercial and every industrial, if I'm saying this wrong, there's not a significant difference between that traffic as proposed. So I don't know if that helps clarify there. But yes, ultimately, the south half of the road, the city is responsible to maintain that.
And, and I'm not trying to be unfair to you, Ben, and I, I understand what you're saying. It's the fact that the reporting seems to be well-written in the, in the reports, but when you're living in it, when you're stuck in traffic and you have tons of cars behind you and you're seeing kids and, and racing happening, and you see elderly people walking on non-paved, you know, sidewalks, and these cars are going 35, 40, 45. That concerns me as just a safety issue for, for that neighborhood area. So I'm, I'm bringing these concerns forward because I'm hoping that we could consider as a city adding a sidewalk to the other side where it is not potentially responsible part for the developer. But that would mean possibly some of those impact fees being redirected to that and fixing that road. Those are my comments.
Correct. There, there's also a big thing, I want to note that ultimately Bridge Street's going to extend west where right now it's shut off to Harding. I think it's Harder, Harding?
Hardy.
And so that does impact the network on how things move around. And when that development, at some point in the future, that will make a connection and open up some of that traffic flow.
Right. But it's, it'll continue to be the way it is as it is. Correct.
Through the mayor. First of all, I, I like the project because we need more growth. This is one thing that we've talked about since we started this council in its current configuration last December. We need growth and we know we need housing. I think it's a good, good project. So really, two questions, and Ben, it's going to go back to you for one of these. First one is if we approve all of this, and it's already been through the Planning Commission, how far out are we from being shovel-ready for this development potentially?
I believe the developer's here tonight, he'll have to answer that. That, that you're, if this is approved, the map runs for two years, and they can get extensions longer than that. It's up to them when they choose to build.
Do we have an idea of how soon you want the project to go through? I like that answer, so. Because what, the reason I ask that is because we've had projects that it's been before the council, been before planning, and then five years later, we're still dealing with another extension and another extension and another extension. And we know we need housing. Ben, to the second part of that is I, I agree with my fellow council member. I know that road very well, and I realize where the funds have to come from. Is, what's the likelihood of that section of road? Because it is full of potholes, we know it's a mess. With a development going in, once the development is done, how difficult will it be for us to start prioritizing that up on our list to smooth out that road to where it makes it a little safer? So you're not beating your car to death or getting moved around with potholes? And then secondly, to make it more attractive for the development?
So this is where our, our $7 million need versus our $1 million programming comes into play. But definitely when I drove through it on Saturday, there's, there's an option, there's definitely an option where we could put at least the, fill the potholes and do a slurry seal and a surface restoration like we're doing out here. When you get into sidewalks and curb gutter drainage, it gets really cumbersome because now you're reconstructing the road to get that drainage facility. You're looking at right-of-way, you've got the utility poles on that south side and different driveway impacts. And so it's, it's a snowball effect for when you start doing the drainage and the sidewalk. But it definitely, it's something we could look into for adding. So at least it doesn't have this weird untaint, unmaintained strip down the middle. We could, we could surface treat it where it's all together and put new striping on it.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on Councilmember Escondola's comments, we just did a quick check, and we determined that she is pretty darned close to that 500-foot restricted area. And as such, I just recommended to her that she recuse herself, and I believe she is going to do that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We'll come in up here. All right, I'm going to open this up to public comment, public hearing. If any of you care to say anything. Step on up and please state your name, sir. Both of you, apparently.
I'm Bob Amaral. I live at 6368 South Township, which is in the county, but I'm here representing Sun Suite. I'm the vice chairman of the board of Sun Suite. And as you know, we had you guys, we had an interesting conversation about the relationship between Sun Suite and the city. And I don't, I'm not here to speak for or against the project at all. What I've come to ask is that you should possibly consider some kind of a, like in the county, if you're going to build a house in the county, you have to sign a piece of paper saying you understand that you're in the county, there's going to be dust, there's going to be noise, and there's going to be smells or whatever's involved with farming. And because of the proximity, if you can go back to the map, but everybody knows where Sun Suite is, we're really, really close. And so there is, there is sound, there is smell, okay? And so I'm just asking you to consider that when you, if you put this forward, to let the people know that may possibly buy into this, that this is the situation that they're going to live with. We're all about having a harmonious relationship with the city, and we don't want down the road some calls saying, hey, look, you know, this place stinks, you know? Or, or this place makes a lot of noise. I mean, yeah, we, we do. I mean, it is what it is. That's why I came. So I would ask you to consider some kind of a device that, that not, not, warnings, not is wrong. We're just advising folks of where they're going to live and the relationship to the manufacturing facility. Thank you.
Through the mayor, in response to Mr. Amaral's, I know that when the city developed its wastewater treatment plant in the south, there was a lot of confusion down there. And ultimately, I think, maybe Diana's in the room, do we notify residents? Or do, is the real estate people, do they, they notify those folks, right? So this would be in line with, with Mr. Amaral's request. I think it makes sense, Mr. Amaral, what you're asking.
Often what we do for subdivisions that are located, for instance, next to agricultural land, we make sure that there's a condition in there that the realtors notify the prospective buyers of the, the proximity of agricultural use. This would be very similar to that. And, you know, the developer would have to agree to add that to the project, but it is something that's in line with what we've done with past practice.
Thank you.
I'm told that at the Planning Commission meeting, that they did add a condition that property owners, new property owners be notified of nearby industrial uses.
Perfect.
Let's maintain fair.
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, good.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Probably a question for Bob, for yourself and Dennis, just in case you have to answer. We already have existing homes there that has been there for 10 years. Is Sun Suite having any issues with the homes that this property's going to be adjacent to? And I would ask you to answer from the mic if you could give a response.
To my knowledge, there's been no, no problems. And the only reason I'm here is just so we can stay on that same course.
Right. No, and I appreciate it. While I'm nowhere near close, living within the 500 feet, my office that I work out of is just the other side of Lowe's. And you guys are great neighbors. I mean, even at the height, I don't hear the trucks, I very seldom hear the plant, the smells. I mean, there's not an issue. And when you approached, I was, it, first thing that came to my mind is that we have a problem that we just didn't know about. But I don't foresee a problem, but as long as we disclose it, I, I still think it's all good.
I'm sure Mr. Bumgarner can smell it on a fairly regular basis. So anyway...
As long as you guys are going to stay in town, I'm okay with the smell, Mr. Amaral.
Well, I mean, and, and I think that speaks to the harmonious relationship that we have. And we just want to, as we go back to that meeting we had, that's kind of, unless we're more or less being asked to leave, you know, we're, have no intention.
Right. No, thank you.
All right, George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is George Musalem. I'm with North Valley Engineering and Surveying in UBA City. We're engineers on the project. We thank you for your consideration, and we're in agreement with all the mitigation, mitigation measures and staff's recommendation. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
We're good. Any other member of the public care to comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close the hearing, and we'll bring you back to council. We have three items for consideration, A, B, and C.
Make a motion, through the mayor, make a motion to adopt staff's recommendations, A, B, and C. Regarding this project.
I'll second that motion.
All right, have a motion, a second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Form refusal. Good job.
And Mr. Mayor, if we could let the mayor, the record reflect, reflect that the councilwoman is back in the chambers.
Very good. All right, number four and five is public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. But public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. I have no written requests here. Does anybody in the gallery care to say anything? Nope? Yes, George? Are you just leaving? All right. See you later. All right. Hearing now, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on any items on the consent calendar? Nope? Anybody in the, do you want to poll anything? Nope? All right, I'll entertain a motion on items six, seven, eight, and nine.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve, move to approve the consent calendar on item six, seven, eight, and nine.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Okay. Number 10, general items, police officers association memorandum of understanding. We have one, two, three, I think, four of those, various ones. Okay, you want some water? You've got a lot of talking.
I got it, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and city council members. I'm pleased to be here tonight presenting these four agreements for you, for your consideration. The first one I'm going to start with is the Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding. I want to give a little background on the Police Officers Association. There's 71 members of the Police Officers Association. There's both sworn and non-sworn members. Some of the non-sworn positions include employees in dispatch, evidence technicians, records clerks, administrative assistants. Their past MOU expired June 30th, 2019, and we started meeting with them in April of this year. We've had 10 meetings to come to this agreement. And it has, has resulted in this MOU language that's before you tonight that was ratified on August 27th by the POA. Some of the terms of this memorandum of understanding is that it is a two-year agreement. They are receiving a 5%, what is proposed is a 5% hourly rate increase in year one, a 4% hourly rate increase in year two. It also expands the education incentive to non-sworn personnel and also the education incentive cap for sworn police officers for the advanced post certificate to 10%. There's also a 5% hazard pay for employees assigned to the traffic division, and the traffic division includes the motorcycle officers. It also increases the benefits for dental, vision, and tuition reimbursement. There is a fiscal impact that you can see from this chart. So at this time, for Police Officers Association, I would like to recommend adopting a resolution approving this two-year memorandum of understanding with them, and then approve a supplemental appropriation of $383,200 to the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget. And I'd also like to thank the city council and the Police Officers Association for working with the city's negotiation team through this process that resulted in this MOU. So at this time, I'll take any questions.
Any member of the public care to comment? All right, bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Make a motion to adopt staff's recommendations, A and B, for the Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding.
All right.
Second.
Second.
All right.
Third.
Motion in two seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Very good. Number 11, police sergeants' letter of understanding.
Yes, so once again, thank you. I'm happy to be here. I'll keep on saying that all through these presentations because I'm very pleased. The police sergeant agreement is in a letter of understanding. They have a total of nine sergeants who are in this bargaining unit. The past LOU expired on June 30th, 2019. Bargaining, as the POA began in April 2019, and after nine meetings with them, this proposed LOU was approved August 27th by this group. Some of the terms of the agreement is that, is it a two-year agreement like POA? Some of the terms are very similar, the five-year hourly rate increase in year one, the four-year hourly rate in year, increase in year two. There's this, also in addition, there's a seven-and-a-half percent incentive pay for employees assigned to both investigation net five. This is an increase from 5% that they are currently receiving under the past MOU, or LOU, excuse me. Their education incentive was expanded for those who have a post-supervisory certificate. So the cap was increased from 10.2% to 12.7%, which is an increase of 2.5% for the post-supervisory cert. It also eliminates the requirement for an accident reconstructive certification for the traffic sergeant. Will then allow them to have some additional monies involved with that, some incentive pay as well. And then increase benefits like the POA for dental, vision, and tuition reimbursement. The LOU, and I should have mentioned this for POA, the MOU was retrobed back to July 1st, 2019. There is a fiscal impact, as you can see from this chart right here. But at this time, I'd like to recommend adopting a resolution approving this two-year letter of understanding with the police sergeants and approve a supplemental appropriation of $94,800 to the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget. Once again, thank you both to city council and the police sergeants for working with the city's negotiations team to have the successful LOU. At this time, I'd recommend approving it. Thank you.
I move to motion if, oh, I'm jumping ahead of myself this time.
No, you're jumping ahead of me.
I'm singing.
Would any member of the public care to comment? All right, go for it.
I move to motion. A and, oh no, two and one as listed above on the PowerPoint.
Which is A and B in the report?
It's A and B and C.
Okay.
Well, those are the attachments here. The recommendation is adopt the resolution approving a two-year LOU with police sergeants and approve a supplemental appropriation of $94,800 to the FY 2019, 20 adopted budget.
All right, we have motion to approve staff recommendations, A and B. Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Number 12, first-level managers' letter of understanding as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We have the first-level management letter of understanding. There's 23 employees that are in this bargaining unit. There's positions that range from a senior IT analyst who is here. We also have a park maintenance supervisor, recreation supervisor, who is also here, and a street maintenance supervisor. Their past letter of understanding expired June 30th, like the other agreements. Okay, I'm here. And we started meeting in April as well with this group, and after seven meetings, we became to some agreed, reached agreement on the language for this LOU. Some of this terms include a 2%, or is a one-year, this is a one-year contract, and it is a 2% salary increase and a one-time non-perceivable stipend of 1,500 or 2% of base salary, whichever is greater. And then also, there is a salary adjustment for the recreation supervisor group because... And then also, there is a salary adjustment for the recreation supervisor group. Because they are an exempt group, their wages have to be double minimum wage. Minimum wage is increasing January 1st, 2020, to $13 an hour, so we've made the first step in that exempt classification double minimum wage, which affects all, the entire classification range. We've also increased benefits for dental and vision and tuition reimbursement. There is a fiscal impact to this, as you can see from the chart. So at this time, I would like to recommend adopting a resolution approving a one-year letter of understanding with the First Level Management Group, and approve a supplemental appropriation of $101,800 to the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget. And I would like to thank council and the First Level Management Group. Thank you, Brian, for being here tonight, for working together to reach this agreement tonight. My recommendation is to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the public care to comment? Nope, okay. Back to council.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make staff's recommendation for the First Level Managers Letter of Understanding, recommendation, A and B.
Second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Number 13, Mid Managers Letter of Understanding.
Yes, the mid manager.
Happy to be here.
Yes, I am very happy to be here. I am. It's great. This is the best part of the job. The mid manager letter of understanding, they have 13 employees. There is somebody here, Scott is here. They have the positions that range from the chief building official, IT manager, senior engineer, to project manager. That's just an example of some of the classifications that are in this bargaining unit. Their past LOU did expire in June 30th. We started bargaining actually in August 2019, and after three meetings, we've reached agreement on this letter of understanding. Some of the terms include a 2%, is a one-year term, and a 2% salary increase, and the one-time money, and the amount of 1,500 or 2% base salary, whichever is greater. And then also, increased benefits for the dental, vision, and tuition reimbursement. This LOU is, like the others, retro to July 1st, 2019. There is a note here that there is four confidential employees that are unrepresented with the city, and they are covered, or follow this MO, or this LOU, excuse me, that is, was adopted by resolution in the past by a prior council. So those, so this costing does include not only the mid manager group, but also the result of the confidential's as well. So at this time, I would recommend that city council adopt a resolution approving a one-year letter of understanding with the mid manager group, and also approve a supplemental appropriation of $87,000, or $87,100 to the fiscal year 1920 adopted budget. Once again, I thank both council and the mid management group. Scott was at the table. I thank you all, and I see Spencer here as well. Sorry, didn't mean to leave you out. Oh, and Tim was here for the First Level, sorry. Didn't mean to leave people out. Ben. So we have a group here. You can see we have a wide.
Upper room around here.
Hey, I'm, you know, I'm happy that they're here and they're seeing this in action, and so I just, it's, yeah, thank you for that, both council and them worked with the city's negotiation team to reach these terms. We thank them.
Thank you. Any member of the public care to comment? All right, back to council.
Through the mayor, first of all, I'm happy to be here.
Very good.
Just wanted to chime in. I move that we approve the mid managers' LOU, staff recommendations, A and B.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you very much, Natalie.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I just would like to also thank Natalie for all her work on putting all of this together, and her team in the HR department. At this point, we are able, or have successfully negotiated with about 120 of our staff, so that's kudos to you, and Shailene, and Greg, and the whole team at HR, so really appreciate that. Thank you.
Indeed, a lot of work and several late nights, so well done. All right, so we'll move on to number 14, the purchase of one six-ton hat, hot asphalt patcher for the Public Works Maintenance Division.
Don't run with it. So I am also happy to be here, too.
All right.
As you guys mentioned potholes earlier, so. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This evening, I would like to talk to you about purchasing an asphalt patcher truck. In fiscal year 1819 budget, council appropriated 220,000 for the purchase of this truck. Public Works coordinated the acquisition in November of 2018. Unfortunately, we had to close the contract with the vendor, Spalding Manufacturing, because they could not meet the city's specifications. The asphalt patcher truck would be utilized by the street division for completing repairs associated with streets, water, and wastewater. The truck would perform several different functions, such as pothole repairs, skin patching, service trench restoration, and minor road failures. Some of the benefits of the equipment will include saving in labor and equipment usage. By calculating employee hours along with several different pieces of equipment involved in the process, we determined that the cost per ton is approximately $575. This cost includes two dump trucks, two flatbed trucks for hauling the tack pot and roller, and five employees. Utilizing the new process would give us a cost estimate of $395 per ton while these, by eliminating the need for extra personnel and equipment. With the final estimate, savings of $180 per ton, or approximately $30,000 annually. In addition, the asphalt patcher would allow us to produce a higher-quality product by maintaining asphalt temperature. Staff learned that Sourcewell Cooperative Program, which negotiates purchasing for local governments nationwide, and had conducted a formal bid for a hot asphalt patcher matching the city's desired specifications. The contract was awarded to PB Loader Corporation of Fresno, California. Staff recommendation is to piggyback on that Sourcewell formal bid and price, as is allowed under the city's purchasing policy and procedures, to capitalize on the cost savings of the nationwide contract. I have provided a video of a similar truck in action, so you can see the usefulness and the many functions. One thing in the video, you're gonna have to disregard, it talks about some related costs. This video is from 2015, so the cost may not be accurate. Yes, ma'am.
Potholes are more than a nuisance. They're expensive. They cost the average motorist over $380 in additional car maintenance and repair annually, and they cost city and county governments billions of dollars to repair. A lot of that money is wasted, wasted on inefficient patching methods that produce, at best, only temporary repair. The ProPatch is a truck or trailer-mounted, unitized asphalt patching machine capable of making effective and permanent asphalt repairs under all weather conditions. Its unique design allows the machine to transport hotter-cold asphalt premixed material and road oils at controlled heated temperatures. The unit's integral hydraulic system, driven by the truck's PTO, provides power to operate the machine's jackhammer, screw conveyor, oil pumps, asphalt agitator, and a variety of other hydraulic tools. The ProPatch provides all the tools and materials necessary for a one- or two-man crew to make effective asphalt repairs, eliminating the use of air compressors, oil distributors, large rollers, and dump trucks. This, in turn, reduces manpower and equipment maintenance costs while minimizing the amount of equipment used in high-traffic areas. Let's watch as our crew demonstrates both the machine and the correct repair technique. The first step is to prepare the hole. This is done by using the onboard hydraulic hammer equipped with a cutting tool. The hole is prepared by cutting away dead asphalt and squaring up the hole. This ensures a uniform repair. Now a coating of emulsion oil sprayed in and around the hole. This creates a tacky priming surface that the new asphalt would adhere to. Asphalt aggregate is now augured into the prepared hole. The crew spreads and levels the fresh asphalt, then compacts the material using the onboard compactor.
That is it. We had to shorten it for you. About five minutes long. Fiscal impact. Total cost is $256,878.69. Two finance actions required: reinstate the 250,000, or 220,000 appropriation from year 1819, supplement $37,000 from unallocated reserves. Staff's recommendation is for council to adopt and authorize items, A and B. And at this time, I can answer any questions.
Go ahead, Manny.
Through the mayor, hey, wonderful presentation, Scott. And I noticed on the truck, it had a hydraulic lift for the viroplate.
It does.
Yes, that's wonderful. Anyway, for being lucky enough to do that for over 30 years, throwing that viroplate on and off the truck gets very tiring, and with this, it's gonna save on back issues in the future, so that is a plus for this vehicle. Hey, I like that. Anyway, but.
Didn't even touch it.
You didn't even touch it, I don't.
I didn't know your voice.
I don't know, but anyway, thank you. I'm glad that you guys found this. It's gonna be a great asset to the city. And then all these folks that, our patch crews will be very busy once we get it. Hopefully, we'll get caught up sometime in the next 15, 20 years. But yes, it's a wonderful asset, and thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Through the mayor, Scott, what happened with the other truck?
So basically, it's not like we're getting rid of the trucks. They'll stay in service, the two, basically, two dump trucks, the two flat racks. They'll still be in service, but when we go out on that job, we'll be just taking one truck and two personnel.
I misled you there. What happened to the truck that you had, that had been the first bid and then didn't meet?
Okay, okay, with the.
Wasn't that sort of a self-contained deal?
So basically, it was, we were asked for the same truck. It was a Freightliner. Spalding was not able to secure the chassis.
Okay.
So, so basically, we didn't want to go with international, you know, so we wanted a Freightliner, and so we just, we felt we had to cancel that contract.
Okay, thanks.
Through the mayor. Can you start fixing the roads, like, as soon as they get here? I can suggest a road. I can go help. I'll be volunteer. Yeah, when is it, when is it supposed to get here? Good question, council.
It is, is it 12, right now, 12 to 14 months, or 14 months to have it built.
So will it be built before the potential development happens, or the street I mentioned by chance?
I'm not, I'm not sure when that, when that development's starting, but.
Next week.
Sooner.
They starting development next week, I heard.
Soon as I get that purchase order, they can start building that truck.
Great. Now, how much time does it save for patching? Because I think that that was one of the, actually, that was a good video. I was looking forward to the ending, and I guess you cut it off there.
Oh, well, in the video, it goes on to more in-depth on patching and service trenches and so on.
How long is it? I mean, how much time does it really save for?
So you're gonna, you're gonna save, so generally, what we do is, in the morning, we'll dispatch a truck, a dump truck, so you go get the asphalt. We dispatch a dig crew.
Okay.
And then we follow it up with a couple of trucks to haul the equipment out. So, so basically, what you're saving is employee time. You're, so basically, this truck will go now to Hallwood and pick up the asphalt. And we'll return with the two employees, and they'll do the patching.
You'll be able to do more then, right? You'll fix more roads if we have the money to do it? Is that the idea?
I'm not saying that we can fix, you know, fix it faster, but basically, with, you know, with this asphalt patcher, it keeps the asphalt at that high temperature, and we're able to work with it, you know, for a much longer time.
And the patch repair, how long does that last? Is it a, with that particular new, you know, heating and pressing and all that?
It should last, you know, right now, we cold patch, and that basically deteriorates very quickly, but this patch will be permanent.
Oh, wow. Fantastic. I like when we get these cool new gadgets that are gonna save us money and time and effort. And remember, I have a street for you. Don't forget about that, okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any public comment on the asphalt patcher? All right, back to council.
Do you have a street?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make staff's recommendation of A, B, and, and B for the purchase of one six-ton hot asphalt patcher for the Public Works Maintenance Division.
Second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? None. Thank you very much.
Okay, Scott, have him get the purchase order for you tomorrow.
Number 15, a city water service connection. Welcome, Ben.
All right, I am very happy to be here, too, and so.
Ben, you almost made me spit my water.
So, so the item before you is in regards to providing a extraterritorial water service connection. So if council, back in March, we, Diana came before the council, and we talked policy regarding providing water service outside the city's jurisdictional boundary, but within the, within the city-county sphere of influence. And so with that, we set up a policy that basically said, okay, if there's an existing house, we'll let you hook to city water if you're willing to enter into this extraterritorial agreement, and then also pay all the fees. And so recently this summer, 2320 Lincoln Road contacted the city and said they were interested in connecting to city water. We usually, usually it stops right there when we tell them what the cost is, unfortunately, usually, but we had an applicant that's having some adverse effects from the well water in that area, and and also, it's a, it's a, it's a spot where we have city water, so it's on the west side, southwest side of town, Lincoln Road, right at the edge where the the Sanborn Tank Site was constructed. And so the two lines there that run in Sanborn Road, basically, you have one line going into the tank and one line coming out for the distribution in that area to maintain pressure. And so we looked at the site, we coordinated with, with the attorney for the extraterritorial agreement, worked out the specifics, and the property owner signed and notarized the agreement. So we have, and he's also, he's actually paid the funds, ready to jumpstart to get this going forward. So with that, tonight, we're basically looking at your approval to move forward with it and authorize the city manager to execute our portion of the agreement. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? A quick question, Ben, is it a one-inch service?
I'm sorry.
One-inch service?
It is a one-inch service.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
With that, Manny, the intent with it being a large parcel, which we do recommend for those sites, is that he's gonna keep the well for landscaping purposes, and then the one-inch service is pretty much for the residence.
Public comment? Nothing. Okay. Entertaining a motion.
Through the mayor. I move that we approve staff's recommendation and authorize the city manager to execute an extraterritorial service agreement with the property owner at 2320 Lincoln Road for connection to city water service following approval as to legal form by the city attorney, subject to material terms.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ben. Number 16, presentation update on Gauche Aquatic Park.
Good evening, Mayor, and you know what I'm gonna say.
Oh, yeah.
I'm so happy to be here.
You're smiling, it's good enough.
Per council's request, staff is here this evening just to give you an update on FRAC, and I want to start off with our city attorney to just give you an update on insurance.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. The council requested an update regarding the insurance status. USA Swimming was able to provide additional insurance documentation for the city. Based on the additional insurance documentation, FRAC does have insurance for commercial general liability, umbrella insurance, and accidental medical. The insurance is primary and non-contributory for general liability. That means that the insurance will pay out first before it comes to the city's insurance to pay out. There is also a waiver of right of recoveries, which addresses a subrogation question that was there previously. This coverage has been confirmed by the insurance agent for the city, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions? All right, so which that means is FRAC. All right, so which that means is frac is covered, which was our primary concern last meeting, if I recall. And that issue has now been resolved. Frac remains in place until they can get things resolved and be up full speed running. It seems to be a very efficient way to do it in that they are, their insurance is primary. We're not going to take a hit from the city if something should happen under the frac umbrella.
That's correct. And their certificate of liability insurance, the policy is through January first of 2020.
Okay. January, and so... Go ahead. Yeah.
So through January first of 2020, again, just dealing with the liability issues here, would be incumbent upon us to make sure that if, if we go forward here, that that policy is reinstated. How do we do that?
That's typically a staff issue. I'd look to Michael, city manager, Rock on that. But typically, what they do is the staff just monitors it as it comes in, and the new certificates of liability are provided within generally thirty days prior to its expiration.
Correct. The city should receive the next one-year insurance premiums prior to the start of that new term. So frac should submit to the city that they've basically renewed their insurance for the next year.
Okay. Have we had conversations with their staff? Is that their intention to do so? Do we know that?
All that.
We have not had any conversations.
Okay. Would the vice president care to speak on the issue, if you're prepared or willing?
So frac would, of course, if the city decides to let frac continue in place without undertaking all of the different machinations that are going to be proposed, would, of course, once we hit December, as a matter of course, a matter of routine, just provide another certificate of insurance that matches the one that we've already provided with all of the supporting endorsements? As insurance policies, especially through big companies, run on a calendar year. So that's why the January first, 2020 expiration date.
Okay. Thank you very much, Holly. Any other questions or comments?
I, I would request that if that was the case, city manager, that we have something documented by November, that the renewals and process or something for thirty days, as we, as our city mentioned.
Okay. What typically happens is their carrier will contact them and say, by the way, your insurance is, you know, due to be renewed. They should get a letter from their insurance carrier probably in October or November saying that it's, you know, we, we need to renew your insurance for the next year. So they'll, they'll probably get that reminder from their carrier, and we'll, we'll check in with them through our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
My concerns still go back to the fact that we have an entity that is not able to enter into contract. An insurance policy is a contract, can be voidable, not saying it is, but it could be, may not be able to be renewed. Also, we do have issues with employees, as frac said at one of their first presentations, that they paid their coaches. So we have workman's compensation type of liability exposure as well, should one of the coaches get injured on our property. With that, I'm still uncomfortable with our overall liability exposure of what's there. Because the other flip side to this coin is the simple fact, and at this point, I, I don't have any questions for anyone, so I see Holly heading to the mic, but I do not have any questions for her. We're not mitigating our risk. And the fact that all of this came to light, and the city is basically turning a blind eye to some things, it still exposes us and sets precedence for future issues to come up. If the next organization comes up and we make another, you know, exemption for them, I don't mind having frac having enough time to go try to resolve this. But in the meantime, we need to protect the city, and that may mean looking at option two or three, so that we have the coaches covered under workman's comp, so we're not exposed there. It goes way beyond just the kids getting hurt. You know, the primary goal that we started was keeping the kids in the pool. And I think we've all agreed to that. We're going to find a way to keep the kids in the pool. That's not there. The sad part about it is, is we're dealing with a problem that none of the five of us or anyone within the city created. This was created many years ago. The trigger mechanisms happened in 2017, and it came to light here in the last sixty days. We need to do what's in the best interest of the city to protect us all the way around. So in the interim, I go back to the, to the root cause of, we need to take care of us as a city, get the kids back in the pool, which is a moot point. But we may have to undertake this for a period of time with coaches that are paid similar stipend or something out of the city, so that it's covered under workman's compensation and such. And even working with other nonprofits, where you have volunteer coaches, most of those organizations still cover, have coverage for volunteers under workman's compensation in case they do get injured while they're out working and serving the community and stuff. With that, I just think that right now, to continue on, the city is starting to expose itself more and more by kind of turning a blind eye just for the sake of keeping the, the kids in the pool. I think we can keep the kids in the pool, potentially pull it in-house for a while, and give frac the time that they need to, to get their, their act together and solve all their problems with IRS and F T B and State Board and Secretary of State and everyone else. Because the whole idea is just to keep the kids swimming, but protect ourselves. So, you know, I did reach out, as I'm a life agent as well, I reached out to the insurance commissioner today, have not received back an answer as of yet, but the question came back to because insurance is a contract. And under the rules with Secretary of State, when you're suspended, contracts can be voided. There's no suing rights. They went through all kinds of things there. But can they simply cancel that insurance? Because it is voidable since they are suspended. Those are the questions I have. I think it opens up a can of worms. A workman's compensation issue is a potential liability because we own the facilities. I want to keep the kids in the pool, but I think we need to look at something different in the, in the interim. So what are the proposals that you were told to look at, Mr. McIntyre?
Holly, did you have a comment?
I believe Mr. Chaffin has a copy of the insurance, and I'm ninety-five percent sure that the insurance that frac has through USA Swimming covers workers' compensation for their coaches. So I'm not sure where we're trying to go here, other than to highlight the fact that a layperson messed up on her filings. I get what you're saying. It is true, frac can't enter into contracts. But frac's agreement with USA Swimming that provides the insurance is that it just has to be a club in good standing. It has no basis on whether or not it is approved by the Secretary of State, the Franchise Tax Board, the IRS, God, or anyone else. It is up to USA Swimming whether or not the club is a club in good standing. If you'd like to view the, view the insurance certificates themselves, I'm sure Mr. Chaffin can provide you with a copy if he hasn't already.
Are you aware of any compensa, workman's compensation mentioned?
I'm looking at the certificate of liability insurance right now. It does not list workers' compensation and employees' liability in the certificate of liability I've been provided at least. And it is available if any member of the council would like to take a look at it.
Okay. And then the employees, are they frac employees? Are they city employees coaching frac kids?
They are frac, they're, they're in frac. They are not city employees.
So based on what we're hearing, they are not covered even today for workman's compensation insurance?
For, there, there are two items here. We currently don't have anything on workers' compensation and employees' liability with regards to their certificate of liability insurance. Whether or not we receive it, if they have employees, they are required to carry it. However, many nonprofits do not have employees. So for example, volunteers are not considered employees under state law that would trigger workers' compensation insurance. Independent contractors likewise. However, if there are true employees, then they would be required under state law to carry workers' compensation insurance.
Okay.
But all that being said, they're still frac, you know, they're, they're still employed by frac, not the city. So if there's a workers' compensation issue, it would have to be taken up with frac because those employees or volunteers or paid employees, either way, are paid or volunteers of frac, not the city.
Under what circumstances, if, if you have a workman's compensation issue, would their other insurance that we've mentioned not cover them? Why do we have to have workman's comp if they have this other huge insurance policy already in place?
Workers' compensation, they have different, different policies have different umbrellas of coverage. And workers' compensation is actually usually for the benefit of the employer because it prevents the employee from basically suing the employer, and instead, they have to use the workers' compensation process. So that's between the employer and the employee. Workers' compensation does not cover third parties like the city. So if it is not a city employee, even if frac did have workers' compensation, the city would not be subject to the city's workers' compensation. In other words, we wouldn't receive the benefit of that umbrella.
So if there's an issue as an employee, whether they would, they would normally file a workman's compensation claim? Is the city in any way on the hook because frac is apparently not covered?
You know, there's a thousand different ways to get injured. But, and so I don't want to give you an absolute yes or no. But the vast majority of the cases, the city would be covered by the accident, the general commercial liability, the individual injury, these sorts of things. The city does have coverage from under USA Swimming and frac right now.
Okay.
The workers' compensation is a separate umbrella. So if, if an employee were to go out and slip, hit their head on the pool, and maybe, or arm, and break an arm, they could do a workers' compensation claim against frac. They would not be able to do that against the city. But if they did try to sue the city for that injury, it would be subject under the personal injury umbrella that we have, that's already been provided as part of the insurance.
I'm glad you're a lawyer, not me. Boy, I tell you what.
I obviously made a bad choice in my prior lives, apparently, to end up in law.
Were, were you swimmer before? No, it's a bad joke.
Yeah. Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Bradley, maybe you can answer, I'll have to ask him. Are your swim coaches, are they paid employees or volunteers?
I volunteer.
Okay. Correct.
So it's a little bit of both.
Yes. Okay. I just, just checking. Just, it'd be great if all three of you were volunteers, we'd be happy trails. I know. Okay.
Did you have something, Grace?
The, the reason, we're, we're trying to find some creative solutions here. And I think getting to the, the end of it is that we're, the students, we do not, I do not, let me rephrase that. I do not want the students standing in USA Swimming to be lost. That their standings to be, can, continue where they're at. Because that's, that's, that's a lot of commitment, a lot of work that students have done. And I do not want them to lose that. And at the same time, I'm conflicted because it's unfortunate that frac's in the situation that it's in. And, and the insurance piece becomes more complicated as we take one layer of the onion, we take another, and, and the onion just gets a little stinkier and, and more difficult to chop and understand. I'm, I'm thinking that there's an opportunity to perhaps look at frac continuing until May 2020. If they do not have everything in order by May 2020, the decision will be made by us, the council, of what needs to happen after that. Because if it's not in order by then, I think that it won't, it's not going to get any better. You, you have the insurance at this point. We're willing to, the students will finish their, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, finish their, you know, standing in their swimming in May, so there's no loss in their time. And then whatever happens after that, the students will continue with a new opportunity, a beginning. So I am, I, that's where I'm leaning towards that by May of 2020, because it ends, that's the fall, fall, I believe is the fall swimming schedule. And, and I feel like we've, we've given it the best shot and opportunity.
Through the mayor. Do you have more to present to us? Because if you do, I'd sure like to hear it before we start getting towards solutions and decisions.
No, we're there. I mean, I, I don't. I would say that I like the idea of frac continuing a little bit longer, whatever that longer is, because that will give our staff, if needed, the ability to have swim coaches ready to go. You know, we, we will be ready with whatever council decides if there's a little bit more time given to frac.
So what would that timeframe be?
Uh, I would say at the minimum, two months to the max, or whatever council wants to give frac the opportunity to become a nonprofit.
So we're, we're looking at a January first. I, I just want to follow up because my biggest issue here has always been the liability, besides getting, keeping the swimmers in the, in the pool. If I'm hearing you right, Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, we're, we're covered through the USA, or USA insurance policy?
Yes.
Okay. So now it's just a matter of who's going to operate the program for a period of time. And it would seem to me, and I don't know how this stuff, Councilman Shaw is much more versed than me, but if the insurance thing's going to come up in January anyway, and that's about three months out, that seems like a reasonable period to try to figure, figure things out. I don't know if frac wants to respond to a three-month extension or not, but...
Well, through the mayor, before we do that, it's my recommendation that we come back to the council in any event in less than three months with an update on where we are with frac and with any other preparations that we would need to do as an alternative to that, if that were to pass. So it's my recommendation we come back in less than three months, and we can have perhaps a more detailed set of options for you at that point, assuming that there are certified coaches, if needed, that are willing to either work for the city or as a separate nonprofit. That will give frac time to, to address the issues that they have with the 501(c)(3) status. And it would give the city time to prepare for the program to be taken by, in by the city, if necessary, or by some other group. So I would strongly recommend that we do come back in no less, you know, no more than three months with an update on where we are on all of those issues.
Through the mayor, I just want to go back for a, a point of clarification with my fellow council member. The kids maintain their individual scores. They lose nothing, to my understanding. You know, if something happens to a club or they change clubs, they maintain their progress, so nothing would be ever jeopardized there. So...
Not that I wouldn't say that you're completely on that. Is that an accurate statement? Would their good standings not change if there was a, a different group that took over? I'm just curious.
If, if we're going to have a dialogue, we need people at the podium, please.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, mayor. Well, I appreciate that, Mayor.
Our swimmers are considered USA Swimming members. Any USA Swimming member, they have their times in a database. Their swimmer, their times are fine as long as they are being coached by a USA Swimming member certified coach. Once that changes, whether it be a volunteer or a paid city employee, the times are still in the database, but they're actually not allowed to practice with a coach that is not USA Swimming certified. There can be several issues that arise from trying to do something like that.
Okay, thank you for your explanation, I appreciate that.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
So the bottom line here is, is they're covered, the insurance is covered, their employees are covered, they're covered. The city is not liable. So the main concern is we'll have staff review their contract in December, making sure that their insurance contract goes forward January 1st, as long as that goes through peacefully and everything, there's no, no problems. I'll agree with Councilmember Espandola that we review this nine months from now. Come back nine months, give them a chance to get their nonprofit certifications. And nine months from now, our staff could be prepped for whatever needs to be done. And hopefully, we'll discuss it then. And there's no need for these folks to come back every two weeks and stress them out. They're covered, their staff's covered, their coaches are covered, we're not liable, that's the bottom line. And then nine months from now, we will discuss it. As long as they show proof, January 1st, we should all be good and happy. And then that's the recommendation I would like to make, if it's all possible.
Any more comment before we?
Yeah, through the mayor, I just want to, Vice Mayor Cardoso, I just want to clarify that I also take the recommendation of our city manager that we come back in three months or whatever that recommendation to really monitor the progress. I'm in supportive of that.
Okay, just to monitor, just to monitor.
Well, to see the progress, I want to make sure that the liability piece of it and the workman's comp and all those issues are.
But staff takes, staff could take care of that for us. It doesn't, as long as staff will bring it to us if it's not right.
Correct, and I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that our city manager just made a recommendation that I'm supporting.
Fair enough.
I would concur with my fellow council members, because Councilmember Boomgard said this before, and our city manager, let's truncate this into a beginning of December, let's see where we're at. Because that's where it's all truncating. Insurance gives them three more months to figure everything out. Still personally uncomfortable with the liability because I understand that quite well. And there is, because attorneys sue anyone. But if it's this council's wishes, let's give them three months. But at some point, we've got to, we've got to make a decision and they've got to get everything straightened out so we can move forward.
Right, I agree. I think it's going to be a time-consuming process. I don't even know, I don't know ins and outs, the details, but I know maybe three months might not be enough time to get squared away and be an official 501(c)(3). However, I do concur that an extension is not only the best course right now, but it's also just simply a matter of respect. This organization's been in place for decades. They made an honest unintentional mistake. The main concern was keeping, keeping the kids in the pool, I agree with that. I also agree with liability as our number one concern as far as our responsibilities here. My concern with that has been answered sufficiently tonight. I would like to follow up and to get the answer on workman's comp once and for all during that three-month window. But that would be my inclination as well to extend until January 1st. Do I hear a motion? Or if we're ready? Do we even need a motion?
We don't need a motion, it's just discussion.
This is just a, action is discussion, so that's our direction.
Mr. Mayor, before you do give the direction, would you be willing to open this up to public comment?
I would be more than willing to do that. We don't have any, so.
Good evening, my name is Pete Backus and I've been monitoring the process of the council and a FRAC. I've had a relationship with FRAC in the past. And I'm in the recreation industry, much like the city is with the gap. I'd be remiss not to caution the city that when you're a small employer, worker comp for your employees is very important. If someone does get hurt, then the liability is not the incident, but all this background and the paperwork and the proper contracts and filings. Also, when you're a small employer, you're liable for payroll taxes, unemployment insurance, disability insurance, all the things that a small employer pays when they give a W-2 employee a paycheck. And I don't think any of that is going on. So I would caution that the city take it step by step. Make sure all these things are in place as fast as possible. If an incident does occur, all this will come out. And I think the city is being irresponsible in this approach. Even with the time gap of two or three months, it's a liability.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to speak? Yep, go ahead. You guys can queue up or do your thing.
Yeah, councilmember named Dale McDowell. And I've been listening to this and it's, to me, it's, it's something that is very, very unfortunate that a mistake was made or whatever happened. But you're floating out liability and when you start talking about insurance companies and who's responsible for this, and yeah, they'll take it. That may be said now, but when it comes down to the point, you don't know what you are. Do you have a kid, turn sixteen, year old, they get a driver's license? Do you let them drive a car without the insurance and say, whoa, well, I forgot to, yeah, I didn't do this? And there's an accident takes place? What's going to happen? So until you can get everything exactly the way it's supposed to be, I can't see going. And it's very unfortunate for the kids, I'm not going against them whatsoever. But it's, the liability is just, you can't say, until you can say exactly what you have, you've got this, this, everything's in place, that's where it should be, the way it should be approached. Not just taking these chances, well, we can go and get by for two or three months. You don't know, there's no guarantee on that. And that's a lot of liability out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Just, just for your information, they are covered, they are insured, as we've been told earlier today. So did one of you two ladies want to speak? I thought you raised your hand.
I was going to, but I will not.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Sharon, please go to the podium, please. Sorry. Since the last gentleman or a couple of gentlemen ago brought up the workers' comp issue and stuff like that, by any chance, would FRAC be interested in making your other two swim coaches volunteers till this matter is taken care of? And that would take some more issues off the board?
We would absolutely love to be volunteer coaches, all of us.
So there we go, no workers' comp problems, everybody's insured, and everybody's moving on smoothly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Through the, through the mayor. City manager, I'm hoping that we can have further discussion on this whole idea of just determining in public that you can just arbitrarily make people unemployed to volunteers. And I'm not in agreement with you, Vice Mayor, at this moment with that. I think that that's, could be misleading and harmful in the discussion of what we're trying to do, so. Thank you.
Definitely your decision, but it's not, we're not making that require, you know, we're not going to take a paycheck away from people like that. But if it's an option, it's an option, and that's exactly right, we do not have the authority to make you do that. But we'll just leave that to you to decide, yes.
Okay, just to let you guys know, we actually, we volunteer a lot already. So putting out some hours for no pay is nothing to us. And I know you're not asking me, but I'm telling you, if that's what it takes to save our kids, save our team, we're there.
All right. I think we are, are you clear on where we are? Is FRAC clear on where we are, where we're moving?
We'll be back in December.
Okay.
Yes, I need to be clear as well. So the direction from the city council is that we'll come back in approximately three months with an update on where we are with FRAC's issues and where the program is.
The second meeting in December would be great.
Okay.
Because I'll be sitting here.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I wasn't thinking that far ahead, but that is true.
No, but anyway.
I make a motion for that.
Yeah. Thank you, I think, what? Anyway, it was a discussion and thank you for the dialogue, we really appreciate it. And thank you for everybody else's opinion out here, too. Sir, did you have anything further?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, appointments of city, UBS city boards and commissions, I understand we have one recusal?
I, I do, and just quickly want to say they're both excellent, and I got to go.
All right. TMI, but enjoy. I'm sure there is a reason, but. All right. So we had interviews for the Economic Development Commission, the city's Economic Development Commission as part of our efforts to expand their purview. We are having a workshop tomorrow at 2:00 PM regarding that with the cities and or Economic Development Commission, our presentation on that with their consultant. We're looking forward to that. We had two folks apply for the two openings. It was Doreen Osumi, who is the superintendent, or excuse me, the, yeah, UBS Unified School District Superintendent, along with Steve Hammerstrom. So they were very good, very articulate, very motivated individuals. And it was really fortunate that we had two openings and two extremely qualified folks to step in and help volunteer for their community. So the recommendation of myself and Vice Mayor Cardoso is that we do accept their applications and appoint them to the Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, do we need to move on now?
Yeah.
Make a motion to appoint Doreen Osumi and Steve Hammerstrom to the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, no, thank you. All right, moving on to number eighteen, which is a report from our city manager, Mr. Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I added this item so that I could communicate certain activities of the city to the public and the city council and so that I could also update the city council on the activities of the city manager's office. Tomorrow, September eighteenth at 2:00 PM, there'll be an Economic Development Commission workshop at the Senior Center, 777 Ainsley Avenue. And we have our consultant will be presenting a very thorough presentation to the council and discuss economics 101. I did go on the city employee orientation tour on Friday, September thirteenth, and no unusual things happened on Friday, the thirteenth. We had a very successful tour. All of the new employees, I believe there were about nine of us, saw all of the new facilities, or all of the facilities in the city. All of the buildings and the police stations, obviously, city hall, the wastewater treatment plant, the water plant, the senior center, gap, we saw everything. Fire stations, it was extremely helpful for me. I was able to meet many, many employees, although there are 300 employees that are full-time and I've met maybe half of them face to face. So I'm working my way around as, as much as I can. And I want to thank the Public Works Department for an excellent video on an asphalt paver, patcher, which I asked them to do. I asked them to find a video and they, they did a terrific job. And I'm extremely pleased to be here, I'm back in Northern California where I belong. And I'm having a great first three weeks. And again, thank you for hiring me and I'm looking forward to working with the council. Thank you.
Very good, well, thank you, we just need a cat now, right? All right. Mr. Boomgard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, three weeks already. Doesn't seem like it. I attended a city planning commission meeting and they are, there's a project coming, it's the Stabler Rehab Facility. Many of you might be aware of it, it's over here off of Stabler Lane. Used to be a behavioral health facility that's been vacant for many, many years. And they're using local contractors and they're going to get that project moving, which is a great use for a long-term vacant piece of property, like to see more of that happening. This afternoon, witnessed the pinning of firefighters. And it's nice that we've got this new crop, as the, as presentation talked about. It's a young group of folks out there, but they are energetic and they had an opportunity to show off their new state fire engine to us today. And, you know, it's obvious that they've got some pride in what they do. I attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting over the last couple of weeks. There's one assembly bill that I'm going to mention, it's called AV 137. Many of you are probably aware of some of the damage that's occurring, either intentionally or unintentionally by the homeless that are camping on our levees. Unfortunately, I'm disappointed to have to report that this bill, which would have helped strengthen laws that would have taken care of folks that were digging into levees or tunneling into levees, that move, that bill was moved into the suspense file. And what that means is, is that it's, it's hanging out there, it might be included in a budget amendment or budget trailer bill. But this would have strengthened up some of the penalties for those who would destroy our levees. I don't think we've had a lot of it up here, they've had more of it down there, but it's only a matter of time. Also, at the Sabuca meeting, the National Flood Insurance Program was discussed. This national flood insurance has to be reauthorized periodically and it's time to be reauthorized now. There's some things that they're trying to do for our, not necessarily in the city, but in the ag, for our ag people down in the, down in the county that would be of benefit to them. So hopefully, they can do that, this would lower some insurance rates for those that are in the hundred-year and the 200-year flood range. Also attended LAFCO as the city's representative. I was selected to attend the Cal LAFCO Conference as Sutter County's LAFCO rep, so I'll be going to that in October. I think there's relative significance into that just because of Bogstore Master Plan and some other city growth things. So I'll, I'll let you know how that goes. I was a bit disappointed and I don't mind mentioning it in this meeting. We had talked about not receiving a stipend for attendance at those meetings. And it came up for a vote, I voted not to, to receive the stipend, however, that lost four to three. That's my opinion, and I'm going to go on record saying is that those things are voluntary and, you know, that's why we serve, we don't need to be paid for them. Just a little political statement on my, on my behalf. I do want to mention one thing about LAFCO, and this is for staff. They were concerned on the Bogstore Master Plan, and I can give you some more details. But as it relates to the ag buffers, they were concerned that, that staff or that LAFCO's comments weren't included in the EIR. And I can give you some more details on that. I would, I would have talked to you about that earlier, but I was out of town. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Espandola.
Well, Michael, I am thrilled that you're here. And it was great that when you started the first day and came into the second day, that there was a trend now that you were going to be coming back to work every day, so that's good. I'm glad that you established that with us. There's been so many activities that we all have shared. And I do not want to take some of those away from my fellow councilmen who are going to probably talk about those. But I'll just kind of highlight a few things that I thought were kind of fun. But I'll just kinda highlight a few things that I thought were kind of fun as a council member to be part of. Going to the chamber proclamation, it was, it was nice for all of us to be there, and even our staff attended. And I'll leave that up to Vice Mayor, because he, he's really our ambassador with the chamber and does a lot of work on our behalf. The other, the 9/11 remembrance, the bells at the fire station one was my first year that I've gone to this, and they've been doing this for 17 years. So what I would ask, Michael, is that perhaps in the future, we could do a better job of advertising that to inviting the community to be more involved and part of that celebration, because I think that the community would be very, it's, it's a moment that I think a lot of people still honor and share with, with open hearts and, and remembrance. A kind of a funny situation, and also a kudos to our police. And that is the Mayor's Stampede. And Councilman Shaw is gonna talk about that, I'm sure, because that's, he really enjoys that. And I do, too, but just to say, he, he has a better, better thing to, I don't, I don't wanna take his thunder.
He was responsible for the.
So anyhow, perhaps. Thanks, Councilman Boomgarden.
Stampede, right?
The stampede. So we were waiting on the corner of Plumas and Bridge, and the, our patrol motor guys were, they were, you know, trying to get everything ready for this stampede to come down. And everybody was excited, waiting on the outside, and it was wonderful just to be there. And we're like, when they coming? And they're like, oh, we don't see them. And then all of a sudden, you hear, watch out, I think they've taken a wrong turn. So my, my friend Happy, that many of you know, she and I started just running towards, to get to the other side, to try to get to the stampede. And then all of a sudden, we're chasing the stampede behind it. And then we realized, I see our city manager there and more patrol. And then I realized that the person who's in the front with the beautiful horse is Councilman Shaw. So he had the front view, and I had the end view of that. So it was fun trying to chase the cattle in the wrong direction. I say that with tongue-in-cheek. Also, on, on a serious, well, I won't finish, I'll finish that one last. And then the other thing that I thought, I would like to invite the community to attend more of these events that are often held by heritage of people with Mexican descent, and the sixteenth of September is Mexico's Independence. But they host these haripels, and the haripels, pretty much the Mexican version of a rodeo. And they do a lot of entertainment in the festival. So if you haven't gone to one, I really think it, you would enjoy it. There's really beautiful horses and the music and the culture and the food. And, and it was free, so I, I went to that on Sunday. But I'll end with the, oh, and I don't want to talk about the Mayor's Cup, the pickleball, because that was, that was really fun on Friday, the thirteenth. Everything was great, and the mayor will have his highlights on that. And lastly is the U of Sutter Homeless Consortium held a workshop required on Housing First and the Uba County Government. And we had, the room was full of providers and community members and elected officials to learn about the requirements and the changes in the law with housing for homeless and those areas. So we're, we're making some great efforts in, in Homeless Consortium, and Vice Mayor Cardoza was there as well, and so was Brad McIntyre at that particular training. And I hear often really good feedback from our providers and our partners about the engagement, how strong our presence is in these meetings and in the services, in particular with law enforcement as well, that are very active in helping when homeless issues or situations are happening. That doesn't mean that they aren't, they have stopped and things are improved in the community, but we're making all efforts in helping, you know, minimize and reduce homeless issues. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like Cinco de Mayo. I'll go on record saying that. No.
Wrong holiday.
The, real brief, the RWA met in Sacramento. Nothing of significance on the agenda there. That's Regional Order Authority. My next committee meeting's coming up Thursday, which happens to be Mr. Martin's Committee for the Transit. That was here earlier this evening. My last week, as a fellow councilmember said, was neck-deep in rodeo. And so I'll end on a couple of patriotic things. Rodeo's great. They called it Marysville Stampede, but Marysville got a cattle drive, Uba City got a stampede. Thank you, chief, for having your officers block the roads. But I will say that our city manager said one cow got out, and it was about 70. Yeah, 70 was what we moved, and they got out of the line of the, the horses. But in true cowboy fashion, within two blocks, they were rounded up and over in a side lot, and then we gathered them and was gone. So it's great. The one thing I like about that is ag is deep in our community, and there's something special about rodeo that ties to the agricultural community as well. And with the significance of 9/11 and just being at all the events at the stampede, the Gibbicky Foundation should easily top half million dollars this year total that they've given to Pink October with the funds that's been raised so far, because they were, they were really close. But when the American flag drops in, when the National Anthem is sung, you never see anybody taking a knee at a rodeo. They're always standing. Their cover is removed, and they're paying respect to that flag and all the men and women that have fought for our freedom over the years. And I'll close with this. 9/11 is a day that a lot of us will never forget. Real significant for me, because of being prior military, but the one that always tugs at my heart, that is my daughter's birthday. I will never forget her being six years old, and then year after year after that, always saying, Daddy, what happened on my birthdays? Because she didn't understand it initially at age six. Let us never forget the lives lost, the 3,000 civilians, the firefighters, the first responders. What George W. Bush said that day with the megaphone with the firefighters in New York City. They heard us. And never, never forget that we have a tendency over the years to let things just get softer and softer. Remember what happened on days like 9/11, Pearl Harbor Day? Those are days that are truly historical and have meaning with our country. And today just happens to be Constitution Day as well. So we go right back to our governing document of this republic and those tests that have made us the true republic that we are today. So I'll close with that.
All right, well said. Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, before I start tonight, I would like to thank Chief Landon and our Uba City Police Department for the issue that we had yesterday here in Uba City. We're very thankful that we live in a community where we have great men and women in our police force that took care of the issue. And it was a big issue, and it was well taken care of. Our men and women of the force did a great job, and it could have been worse. And the situation was taken care of professionally. And I just want to say special thanks out to you and your, and your Uba City Police Department Chief. Before I start off. I'm gonna start off with meetings. There's gonna be a lot of repeats, so I'm gonna be real quick and short. As I said, we attended with Councilmember Espandola the Homeless Consortium meeting. And then also the next day, city manager and myself, Michael, we went to the By County Homeless Services Group meeting. Attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting also, Planning Commission meeting. And then we had interviews with the Economic Development Commission, Mayor and I. Swearing in this afternoon is a badge pinning. We have four promotions and one brand-new firefighter. Congratulations to our fire department. Make it quick. We were all at the Mayor's Cup. We all attended the proclamation of the chamber. Open, it was open house, National Chamber Week. For community events, we had cattle drive, of course. The rest, it stands for Regional Emergency Shelter Team. There are ninth annual Lual dinner I attended. And these folks, it's all volunteer, all donations, and they take care of people in the wintertime that have no place to live. All the churches in the community come together, and these folks take care of anybody. They're not out in the cold. They're in a nice, warm building with a warm meal. The ceremony of the 9/11, I didn't get the memo for our, for our fire department, and we ended up at the 9/11 ceremony in Marysville at the Washington Square with Councilmember Shaw and Boomgarden. I attended the Walk-in Alzheimer's. And then we also attended the annual Blues and Brews BBQ celebr, BBQ celebration for the Kiwanis. And all that money stays in the community for the children of the community, for school scholarships. And then Saturday, Councilmember Shaw and myself attended the Celebration of Heroes. And for chamber events, because we've been having a lot of meetings, I've only been able to go to a couple, we had a ribbon cutting at Freedom Own Health. And then of course, of course, the business after hours, Gibbicky Ford for the Marysville Stampede Rodeo kickoff party. And that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Very good. I'll make mine stuff quick as well. Just things I attended was the, of course, the Economic Development Commission interviews for those two individuals we appointed tonight. I did have another Meet the Mayor event. This time, it was in Mr. Tam's classroom, kind of an impromptu. George isn't here, he's always very helpful with that. But it was an impromptu, Mr. Tam's class over at Feather River Academy. He teaches adults who are reintegrating, who have kind of aged beyond high school from the special needs arena. Was very interesting, was, I got some really good questions I can't repeat, but it was, it was good. The 9/11 memorial at the fire department was very moving and very well said, Mr. Shaw. It was very, a pleasure to be there for that. The Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency attended that meeting. As mentioned, the National Flood Insurance was discussed there, among other things, on the, on the more of a routine nature. Gilizer meeting this year for the district, it was very quick. It's probably a 10-minute meeting, the regular routine business happened there. We already mentioned the cattle drive, we did happen to be there. My granddaughter got to enjoy a stampede. It was very wonderful, up close.
Up close.
A few feet.
Picture's right behind him, the picture as they flew by.
What?
You, you were taking a picture of your granddaughter as they flew by.
That was the fastest cattle drive ever. It was good, though. The Freed Facility, and forgive me, I don't know the acronym, but it's a facility over here in the B of A building that provides modifications to homes for elderly or folks who have lower income to help make their homes safer, say, for example, railings in the showers and things like that, wheelchairs and prosthetics. It was very, very informative tour, and I really appreciated that. Of course, Sawbuster is always a fun time. The pickleball tournament, which is known as the Mayor's Cup, our first annual. I want to immediately thank Brad. He put a lot of work and a lot of effort, oh, I have a thing here. This is the, this is the Mayor's Cup trophy. So it's kinda cool, because it's gonna be, first of all, it was a lot of fun. If no one's ever played it, I highly recommend it. Stretch first, I didn't, was a bad idea. But it was a lot of fun. And I think I had a really good partner sitting over there, Terrell. We actually won a game. It was fun. We did? Oh. We did?
No thanks to you.
Apparently not. Oh, we did win two. Okay. All right, good. As long as we beat Mayor Sumayaw, I'm happy. And we did do that. But anyway, so it's cool, because the first annual, right? And we raised money for Friends of Uba City Parks and Recreation. We raised money for Casa de Esperanza, and we raised money for Environmental Alternatives, which is a foster kid or foster agency out of, in Marysville. The first, the winners of the first annual was Brenda Hood and Mike Johnson. Little bit ringers, but okay, they still won. They're, they're members of the thing, but we have this thing on the side, so it's, we're ready for at least, at least five more years. We'll put their name on it and put in the mayor's office in city hall, and we can go all the way around if we need to. So it's pretty cool. It was, it was a lot of fun. And I love the, the win-win stuff, where you have fun for a good cause. There's no way you can go wrong. And I really want to thank our presenting sponsor was the name, the word for it, Ron and Norma Giovanetti. There's a familiar name for all of us when it comes to philanthropy in this community. They stepped up once again and really helped out. So I really appreciate all, everyone's participation in that. And then I just also want to echo what Vice Mayor Cardoza said about the incident yesterday with PD. You know, the officers, they go to work every day, and they, they train every day, mentally prepared every day for, for something that they hope never happens, ever. Well, tomorrow it did, or, excuse me, yesterday it did. And I'm just very thankful that everyone went home that night. And we really appreciate the work you all do. So thank you very much, chief. All right. I hope I'm not forgetting anything. Assuming that I'm not, we will adjourn for the evening. Thank you very much, all, for being here.